Estimate to work off.
So could a compromise to the to Vice Mayor and Councilman keep the add the word approximately or estimated at fifteen thousand and then remove remove the potential sources of funds.
Fine.
Vice Mayor, you okay with that?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, I see your point as a lion, I guess as a lion. Yeah, but I I see your point. It's a good point. But I do know, given that I'm sort of on the Millbrae Community Foundation Rec Center Fundraising Committee, that the discussion of artwork at the Rec Center is something that they are actively fundraising for. What that artwork might be is again comes back to City Council.
And just to be clear, so this says cost estimate. I think what might make sense is zero to fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars was pegged off of maybe a more elaborate mural that we have at the skate park and funding sources TBD.
That sounds great. Yeah. Millbrae has never received any.
Signed up to donate money. It says requested by just like proposed. We'll reword it.
Okay, and then, you know, just like the plans that we approved last word talked about last week, having this in the Culture Arts Work Plan means that they can then be in a better position to apply for the San Mateo County Arts Commission Grants, of which Millbrae, I do believe, has never received any grants, which should give us a better chance of getting funding, and they give grants out every year. And they've just put out a solicitation. So any other comments from Council, opening it up to public comment, call in user underscore one? Maybe the call in user, your hand is raised. If you don't have a comment, we'll just move on and close public comment, or if you're having problems unmuting yourself. I show that you're still muted.
If you have to do star nine.
Star nine is to raise hand. I think they just left the room.
Okay, all right, I'm closing. I don't see, oh, sorry, quick check. Eduardo, do you see any? I see, well, call in user one still has their hand raised. Call in user number one, could you unmute yourself? Star six, maybe?
There you go.
And if you could please give us your name, please go ahead.
This is Marge.
Welcome, former Mayor Cola Pietro. We can hear you.
Okay, I just have to say I dialed in at three minutes to seven, and then I pressed nine and whatever they told me to do to talk. And then he went so fast, I wanted to make a comment under public comments. And then also I'm going to want to make one when it comes up to the districting. So could I make a brief comment that I was going to make under public comment?
Certainly, please go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to call the attention to the City Council and staff. You're, as you well know, you're going through it and our community goes through it with you, and you're having several meetings of importance to the community. And you know, the viewers like to have to be participating at the real lifetime. And there are sometimes meetings such as a ten o'clock district meeting, I think it was. And of course, the beautiful annual tree lighting ceremonies that are not streamed live. And I'd like you to give some consideration to take this as being transparent, especially, especially when we have such important meetings to do. And you know, not try to cut things out streaming live, you know, for budget purposes, you know, prioritize it and, you know, think that the community is very interested and everything goes by so quickly. So I just want to call that to your attention and have some consideration that, you know, the community, you know, needs to have, I think, a little bit more exposure and transparency during the lifetime. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, former Mayor Cola Pietro.
And Mayor, just just may for the record, because we don't have the timer up, that was two minutes and eighteen seconds, while within the three minute time window for the record.
Okay, thank you.
So do I hold on again now?
No, no, you will call you back. Well, you can raise your hand again later when we get to those agenda items. Thank you, former mayor.
But note that I need.
Okay, we've got you, former mayor. Thank you. All right, closing public comment on agenda item number one, bringing it back to council. This is an approval. If there's no further discussion, motion and second?
Motion to approve as amended.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen.
Second Oliva.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Just be all clear on the amendment, please.
The amendment is on, I don't know what page it is, but it's a screen that's up right now under cost estimate. It'll say zero to fifteen thousand dollars. And Amy, did you catch the rest?
It was funding TBD, funding, funding sources to be determined.
To be determined.
Does that work for you, Councilman Fung?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. If we could call the vote, please.
Councilmember Oliver.
Hi.
Councilmember Fung.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappen.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Hi.
Mayor Schneider.
Hi.
The City Council adopts the twenty twenty-two Cultural Arts Advisory Committee Work Plan by the vote of five to zero with amendments to the cost estimate to rewrite it to say TBD.
Thank you, thank you, City Clerk, and congratulations Chair Lauer and to the MPAC members. I will see you on Friday at our monthly meeting with the professor. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, moving to agenda item number three, this is a public hearing. Sorry, I've got to get back to my agenda. A public hearing, we have translation services in Chinese and Spanish available this evening for our CVRA Public Hearing, California Voter Right Act Public Hearing. Can our Chinese interpreter Prudence Miller and Ting Li, please give the public instructions on how to access the translation services in Chinese?
Sure thing. You can hear me okay?
You're coming in great.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Sure.
And can our Spanish interpreter Javier Vargas and Andrea Saudi, please give the public instruction on how to access the translation services in Spanish? Mr. Vargas.
Yes, definitely. Can you all hear me well?
You're coming in great.
Thanks so much. Muy buenas noches. Gracias por acordarnos en la reunión de hoy de la audiencia. Tenemos servicios de interpretación en español también y en chino mandarín. Para elegir los servicios, por favor, les pedimos, de favor, que vayan a la parte inferior de su del Zoom. Van a ver un globo terráqueo. Ayer en el globo terráqueo, por favor, elijan el idioma de su preferencia para escuchar la traducción. Y también pueden poner el mudo el audio original para que no se distraigan con esa información. También les pedimos, de favor, que si quieren hacer algún comentario, que hablen claramente, pausadamente, para que el intérprete los pueda traducir esto claramente. Muchas gracias por su atención.
Thank you. So tonight is this agenda item transition to district based elections for council members. Public hearing number three, this is an action item tonight. And City Manager, if you could please begin the the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will just hand it over to our consultant Gabriela Morales from Redistricting Partners for a presentation.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Just a moment. All right, can you see my screen okay?
Gabriela, it's coming in full screen.
Perfect.
You're good. Yep.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much. All right, well, welcome to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two districting presentation. My name is Gabriela Morales, and I am the redistricting manager or one of the redistricting managers for the redistricting partners. We are working with the city to help with data and outreach. So thank you so much for coming and participating in tonight's council meeting. Your voice and your community's voice is so important to this process. So public input is pivotal to the process of districting, and I hope that you will all submit your own public testimony. We rely so much on the public to help draw the lines in a way that is fair for as many people as possible. So with that, let's move on. Things we will cover tonight is the traditional districting and redistricting principles, the Fair Maps Act, and communities of interest, and some next steps. All right, so there are a number of criteria that have been used nationally and upheld by the courts. These are all in order. So basically, the council has rules to follow when drafting maps. This list is in order of importance. They have to follow these traditional districting principles, which are there to prevent gerrymandering. The first one is relatively equal in size, so people, not citizens. Essentially, every person under the Constitution needs to have equal representation. So it's based on on people, not so much status. So an example of this too would be that a baby should have just as much representation as a sixty-seven year old. And they should be contiguous. District should not hop or jump. This means that you should be able to draw lines without lifting your pencil. Should keep districts compact in appearance and function. So an example of this would be, you know, two houses may appear in a map right next to each other, but they might be separated by a freeway. So in appearance, they appear right next to each other, but in function, it might take a long time to get there because of the freeway separating it. And they should maintain communities of interest. So we'll talk a lot about communities of interest tonight, and basically, a community of interest is a neighborhood, community or group of people who have common policy concerns and would benefit from being maintained in a single district. So COI, shortened term for community of interest, is defined by you, the local community members. And another way of understanding a community of interest is that it's simply a way for a community to tell its own story about what neighbors share in common, what makes it unique when compared to other surrounding communities. And why is a community of interest important? Keeping communities of interest together is an important principle in districting. It can be especially helpful to communities that have been traditionally left out of the process. Community members can define their communities by telling their own stories and describing their concerns to policymakers. Without this, those who may not have their best interest in mind will define the communities for them. And finally, they should, the line should follow or can follow city, county, and local government lines. So lines such as water districts and fire districts or other local districts may also be used. So another way of thinking of communities of interest is bringing like people together for representation. Communities of interest are the building blocks of districts. A community of interest includes ethnic and language minorities and other groups. They should be subjective and open-ended to be as inclusive as possible. So because communities of interest are defined by you and other community members, you do not need census data to submit your own community of interest. And it's not always about the data or the math that goes behind it, but rather about personal stories when you're talking about your community of interest. Some examples of Voting Rights Act communities would be Latinos, Asians, and African Americans. The Voting Rights Act is a federal law that seeks to remedy racial disenfranchisement to protect these communities. And while communities of interest may include race, it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing district boundaries. So a community of interest includes ethnic and language minorities and other groups, as mentioned before. Other community examples are people living near an industry, farming, higher education, manufacturing, senior citizens, students, downtown, urban, rural agriculture, homeowners or renters, and so much more. These are just a few examples of how you can start thinking about your own community of interest. The way I like to think of it is if you can make the argument that your community is a community of interest, it likely is a community of interest. So three critical questions in defining your community. Communities can best be described by answering these three questions. The first question being, does the community have a shared culture, characteristics, or bond? Personal stories are so powerful. Find community members willing to share examples of things residents share in common and what makes your community unique. Imagine describing your community to someone who wants to move to your community. Does your neighborhood share certain celebrations or traditions? Are there important places where your community gathers? And what is the history of your community, of how your community came together? The second question being, is the community geographic in nature and is the community able to be mapped? Whenever possible, include statistics to support your testimonies. You can include data on education levels, graduation rates, median household income, poverty levels, access to technology, homeownership rates, language isolation, voter registration rates, and so much more. This information can be gathered from the U.S. Census Bureau, universities, local government reports and other areas. But please, please, please consider using reliable sources such as the U.S. Census Bureau to find data on income, education, language, race, ethnicity, and ancestry. And the third question being, what is the community's relationship with the jurisdiction being districted? So how is it affected by the policy decisions made by the elected officials? Often, communities get involved in districting because they feel their issues have not been adequately addressed by their elected representatives. So highlighting community issues and personal stories and written narratives help to demonstrate the importance of having elected officials who understand and respond to community needs. So has your community come together to advocate for important services? And have you worked for more recognition or support of your community? So some other traditional redistricting principle would be starting in twenty twenty, cities and counties doing redistricting have additional criteria they must follow under the California Fair Maps Act. So the process must be transparent when conducting redistricting. Not using incumbent or candidate residents as a community of interest and not drawing districts to advantage a political party. So this could be anything Republican, Democrat, any political party you can think of. And now some next steps, the council will determine whether there will be four or five city council seats. And the council should provide redistricting partners with information as to where neighborhoods or communities are that should remain whole and other criteria to prioritize as draft maps are created. And some upcoming hearings, as mentioned, this is the third hearing. And the next one will be in January, where there will be a presentation of draft maps. January twenty-fifth, a review of the draft maps, and February twenty-second, the final vote on maps. Although these are the days where the draft maps are being presented and reviewed, it's still important to submit your community of interest and all your ideas. Now up to the final vote on maps. And here is a citywide map. And this has all the data taken from the twenty twenty census and the citizen voting age population. So as you can see here, it is fifty-two Asian population and eleven percent Latino population. And then if you look at the citizen voting age population, the numbers are a little different, and that is because everybody considered in the census may not be eligible to vote, maybe because they're not eighteen or for other reasons. And so that is why that number may appear a little differently. And again, I just want to encourage all of you to submit your testimony and be a part of this process. Your stories and your community's voices are so important to how this process moves forward. So thank you so much. That is all I have.
Could you explain that?
City Manager, did you have anything else to add?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, opening it up to council comments. Go ahead, Councilwoman Pappen.
AIAN percentage you have up there, it's not, doesn't seem to be, is that defined anywhere on your?
AIAN, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing.
The last slide you have up?
Oh, on the bottom?
Yeah, now, well, you've got under the census numbers and citizen voting age population, voting which are zero. What, just, you have something up there. What does AIAN percentage mean?
You know, to be honest, I'm not sure what that stands for, but I can ask our partners and get back to you on that.
American Indian, Alaskan native.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oliver. Greatly appreciated. And then I'm not quite sure how on the census data, we have zero percent black and then one percent black voting population. Why is that not consistent? Just as a matter of record.
Probably rounding.
Yeah, that is interesting. You know, I I will have to get back to you on that answer as well. I'll ask our line drawers and those who brought me this map to be sure, so I can give you a correct answer on that.
Well, I see down below it just, yeah, it looks like the rounding, because you had point oh seven as far as the population goes, and then the census numbers there, so.
Voting age population?
Yeah, probably. Thank you. Clearing that up here. And then I had another question here as far as neighborhoods go. In obtaining that information, so I'm in a specific neighborhood, just because that's the way the homes were built, I think. Is someone giving you that neighborhood information? And then in addition to that, I think people might be interested in the school district boundaries for like the elementary schools, probably how that breaks down. That might be of interest to some parents out there. I don't know if we provide that information or how that works, but if anybody's drawing a map, they might want to see that. I think if the City Manager can clarify here, I think we do have specific neighborhoods as identified. Do you have that information and can that be offered to whomever is drawing a map?
Yes, Councilmember, that is correct, and we are using three maps just as a reference and resource point. One is the neighborhood boundary map, the other is our adopted land use plan and map, and the third are the school district boundary maps. So all of those three maps are up on our website and available to the public for review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. Councilman Oliver.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up briefly on that. Actually, looking at the neighborhood maps that we have posted on the website, and I think many of these boundaries are extremely arbitrary. For example, it shows some neighborhoods that extend from two eighty down to El Camino. And some that are cut off in areas that really should be, I think, considered part of the same neighborhood. So I would just caution, you know, redistricting partners not to take that map to not to accept it as gospel by any means. As Councilwoman Pappen mentioned, I think these are oftentimes based on when neighborhoods are built. Sometimes the names are, I think, made up by Realtors, no offense to the Realtor on the council. But I would not necessarily defer completely to this map that we have of the neighborhood. I think it's far from perfect.
Just a little correction there, Councilmember Oliver. We don't make up neighborhood names. We have our own areas that we use for searching.
Make up the the acronyms, right?
Like NOPA. We have, we actually, we have our own areas and searches.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver. City Manager, I believe, just before I open it up for public comment, the main goal for tonight's meeting, in addition to hearing from the public in general, is the discussion of whether to go to five districts or four districts and an elected mayor. So we are hopeful, the council is hopeful that when the public gives us comments, that you can provide us some, where are you in this area? Five districts versus four districts, because that does dictate how the maps will be drawn. So with that, if there are no other comments from council, we'll come back to council. Opening up the public hearing, opening it up for public comment. I see the two-minute clock is up. Hold on.
Mayor, could you just be, excuse me, but could we just be clear to the public that if the four districts would mean a mayor at large and the five districts would be a rotating mayor?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, I kind of thought that was going to be part of the presentation, but hopefully staff can come back and and after hearing from the public also tell the public what this is going to mean if we go four districts with an elected mayor at large and/or five districts.
Thank you.
With that, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
No, I just said, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. All right, first up, we have former Mayor Cola Pietro. If you can unmute yourself. Councilwoman, or former Mayor Cola Pietro? Okay, I just lost you. Okay, Ms. Cola Pietro, if you can hear us, we will, I will, I will not forget you. John, if you could unmute yourself and you, the clock will start. There we go.
Okay, I I support that five district because
Yo apoyo los cinco distritos.
Hold on, John, stop the clock, please. Eduardo, we need to mute the translation. Are we set there? You can, you can start over, John. Is this John Chang?
Yeah, John Chang, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. And also my, yeah, and yeah, I I I support that five districts because if
Yo apoyo los cinco distritos.
And you won't have, every time you, if a four district, it comes tie, and every time I have to have another one to break the tie. So so I think five district is easier to to do business. And and also five district, if there's no at large, is just by rotation. I think that would be fair, because from the point of democracy, you know, is supposed to be decentralized, not not one control everything. So so by rotation, that will become fair to every district. That's my point. Thank you. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Um just to make sure, if you're not quite up yet, make sure you're still muted, so we don't have background noise. Ms. Cola Pietro, I see you're unmuted. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Cola Pietro. Two minutes.
Thank you. I'm gonna go rather quickly. Um I uh voted this afternoon to keep four-year, uh keep the four-year terms for council members elected by the voters. Keep one-year term for mayor using the current rotation system, not voted by uh mayor not voted by the voters. Uh Millbrae is a small city and um the elec- the elec- the um, the election every two years would uh be expensive. It's not enough learning time. If someone is not re-elected, no opportunity to be the mayor. It would be very stressful with the, with the funding for uh campaigning and uh voting um every two years. And um it would be very difficult and stress and stressful for other communities to keep up double the work when you have vote, uh elections every two years be disruptive to the businesses. We need a smooth transfer for whatever this is and we need to think about having very, very clear um and concise activities for voting. We don't usually get a very high percentage of voters. We don't know what it'll be like in each of the um each of the uh districts and um uh that's about what I have to say, and I hope I was uh in with this, with the uh three-minute warning.
You're doing, you're, you're doing great. You're just on time. Thank you, Ms. Cola Pietro.
Now, how do I unmute? How do I mute?
Ricardo, could you please explain the phone?
I can mute her.
Thank you. Um uh Nathan Chan, please unmute.
Yes, Nathan Chan here. Uh thanks again for your time to address you on this very important topic. Um I just want to reiterate that I think uh four districted council members plus an at-large mayor is my personal preference. I think it's important to have a elected official accountable to the whole city. Um I also think that there's no reason why the mayor shouldn't be a four-year term uh like the rest of the council. Um I, this would create a situation where, you know, the mayor, there would be two sort of off-cycle uh districted council members compared to the mayor election, um but that's no different than what we have to navigate uh at the federal level. Um while I have your attention, I wanted to turn to another aspect of this process uh that we discussed a little bit at the community workshop on Saturday. Based on my experience in the county district-wise advisory commission, as well as what seems to be happening at the state level right now, is that uh commenting, public comment before maps are drawn is a pretty hard uh thing to solicit from the public, because uh people aren't used to, not necessarily used to thinking of their communities of interest uh in being able to describe them in words or even putting them on a map. But once they see a map and they see a line dividing their community, their neighborhood, they will certainly have a reaction. And so um at the community workshop, we discussed the possibility of scheduling more meetings in January after draft maps have been presented. I highly, highly encourage uh the council to direct staff uh to confirm this. I think there's going to be a lot more public testimony uh at a later stage, and that's where we'll, we won't have any trouble finding people in the public commenting, and we need the time and uh meetings to accommodate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. City manager, do you want to, I I have no other hands raised. Do you want to comment? Um because thankfully, the city has a plan. I do see the Ter- Terese's. I I don't know if it's Sherry or Joe. So um city manager, do you want to answer Nathan or wait and come back at the end?
I prefer to wait until after public comment.
Very good. Very good. Um a Sherry Terese.
No, actually, it's Joe Terese.
It's Joe. I'm looking at the photograph. So there we go. Welcome, Joe.
This is picture, yes. Good evening. Uh thank you for the opportunity. Uh first, I'd like to just start by saying that overall, I'm not really in favor of this whole process, although I understand it's going to happen. And so um I don't think we really need to be split into districts, but uh again, I understand that's going, going to happen. So that being said, I would be in favor of five equal um election districts. And the reason for that is, one is I think that if we had an at-large mayor, then that at-large mayor would necessarily live within one of the other four districts, and therefore one of the four districts would actually have two representatives, so I don't think that's fair. Also, uh one advantage that I do see to the idea of having election districts is that it's gonna be easier for folks to campaign uh and spend less money. And I think that having uh someone have to run for mayor is is gonna sort of go counter to that, because they would have to campaign throughout the whole city. So that would lose some of the advantage of of uh having these smaller districts, which I'm hoping is gonna lessen the financial burden on on candidates who are trying to run, so. Um and then lastly, I've said this before, but I'll say it again, I really think that um I I do agree with the idea of the rotating mayor, but I believe that it's very important that in the future that the protocol for how that mayor is selected needs to be formalized and uh and codified, so that uh some of the um confusion and um psychodrama that happened over the last decade won't be repeated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Terese. Margaret Ning, please unmute and go ahead.
Hello, mayor and council members. Are you guys hearing me okay?
You're coming in great.
Thank you. I also echo Joe Terese's comment that I'm not in favor of this we district process, but I also, I understand that we have no choice but to move forward. If we have to decide tonight, my recommendation is to have five districts with a rotating mayor. Um and the, the reason being so is that it's important that each elected member to vote into mayor position that represents the entire city. This will continue to encourage each district council member to focus on making the best decision for the entire city rather than individual districts. So therefore, I support five districts with a rotating mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ning. Uh the city clerk, I have, oh, I just have someone on the phone before we there is someone on the phone. Before we open that up, city clerk, could you please give instructions to anyone who might be watching this live? How they might be able to call in, the phone number that they can call in um as they're watching this on cable or on their computers at home?
Absolutely. So the dial-in number is one six nine 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 zero zero nine one two eight. And uh the ID is eight seven six three zero nine two four eight nine two. If you want to use the raise hand feature and you're dialing in, uh please press star nine.
And because you gave the passcode uh number fairly quickly, can they also find that on our website?
It is on the
the number once more and make sure someone's got pen in hand, that they can get that code.
Absolutely. Uh the dial-in number, one six nine 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 zero zero nine one two eight. And the meeting ID that you will need to enter is eight seven six three zero nine two four eight nine two. And if you would like to raise your hand and you're dialing in, please press star nine.
Thank you. Thank you, city clerk. Uh we do want to hear from you, and again, um we have a decision to make tonight, but we do have a long process, and the city manager will update us in a bit. I see iPhone number three. If you could unmute yourself and please give us your name. I see a thumbs up. I don't see an unmuting yet on iPhone number three.
There you see.
There we go.
This is Lou Sandrini. Do you hear me?
You're coming in great, Mr. Sandrini.
Well, I concur completely with the recommendations of others and for the reasons they've given that we go to five districts, not four and one. I also agree with the comment that it's really unfortunate that we're having to do this. Everyone should know, the only reason we're having to do this really is because the council and the city manager failed grossly when this question first came up by not addressing it with the concerned party administratively. Had they done that, there was a reasonable possibility that the subject would not have gone forward with legal implications, and we could have avoided that. And the districting is really a sad day for the city. It's going to leave a legacy of many problems with regard to how the districts will function. And again, I regret to say, your council and your city admin- manager has failed the city in not properly addressing this when it first came up. Thank you for nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Sandrini. Amy Lauer, if you could unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you so much. Here I am with, wearing a new hat. Um I am in favor of an elected mayor, so the four and one. Um mainly because uh putting on my business hat, I I actually don't think that uh once you're elected, uh you should be able to rotate through without being accountable for performance. So what if in your rotation, you know, you sort of let people down, you get to rotate into mayor without being elected? So my um corollary to that is, I also think that there should be campaign fundraising limits. I don't know exactly what those should be, but those should be so there's equitable access to campaigning and getting yourself known. Um as everyone has said, we're a small community. So I think it is possible to get out there, meet people, represent them. And so, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Last call. Anybody wanting to give any uh, give public comment, please raise your hand or please alert us if you are on the phone. Okay, seeing no raised hands, going once, going twice, closing public comment. Thank you. Oh. Hello? Okay, closing public comment, bringing it back.
I'm sorry, excuse me, mayor. This is Jean Wong. I raised my hand, but I haven't been called.
Oh, Jean, I'm sorry. It's not showing up. Please go ahead, Ms. Wong.
Okay, sorry. Um good evening, Mayor Snyder and uh council members. Um I I would like to see Millbrae retain the current city council, five members and the annual mayor, mayor rotation. Uh it's served the city well, and I think it will continue to do so. Uh the process has allowed residents opportunities to access the caliber and effectiveness of our elected officials and has also provided elected officials opportunities to expand and improve their leadership skills when they do rotate to the position of mayor. A common argument that I hear for a four-member council and an all, and an at-large mayor is that the council members uh don't always put the interests of the city as a priority, and therefore it's important to elect a mayor to represent the whole city and not just the district. I have ever argued that um there's little evidence to support this assumption, and I have the most, I have confidence that any council member elected to Millbrae City Council will know that their responsibility is first of the city of Me- of Millbrae, regardless of the district they they represent. I also hope council will take the opportunity to codify the mayor rotation protocol, so it becomes a part of Millbrae's city code, and the codification will ensure that uh the rotation process is managed smoothly and without disruption. Also, um like Amy has mentioned, it'd be nice to see some sort of financial reform uh addressed by city council and to uh address a campaign limits uh to, to avoid um special interest uh participation in our city elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Okay, last call. Again, I don't see any hands raised. If anybody else sees a hands raised, please shout out to me, and I don't see everyone. I'm not on that mode. So with that, now again, closing public comment, bringing it back to city council. City manager, there was at least one set of questions for you, uh if you would like to start us off.
Yeah, um certainly, I guess I'll start with the, with the last part, which is um two members of the public, or actually, three members of the public, uh disagreed with this, and I'll just, for public information and for the record, um the city was facing a lawsuit, so th- this is um in response to a uh potential threat of a lawsuit and state law. And and so this came to this city as a result of state law and abiding by state law. Um and then uh in terms of the number of people that have participated in public comment this evening, um there was a total of eight. Uh six of those um members of the community have stated that they would like a, five districts with a rotating mayor, which is seventy-five percent of the eight and two, just twenty-five percent have indicated they would like four districts and an at-large mayor. Um with all of the information that we have out on our website and it's available to the public, we do have a survey um that is out and it's been distributed uh to the community. So far, we have eighty people that have responded, and of those eighty people, thirty-three, forty-one point two five percent have indicated uh that they would like uh five city council districts with a rotating mayor. And fifty-eight point seven five percent or forty-seven people have indicated uh that they prefer four city council district, districts with a uh elected at-large mayor. So in the survey of eighty people, uh the preference so far by uh fifty-eight or almost uh fifty-nine percent, forty-seven people is four districts and then eight at-large mayor with forty-one point two five percent or thirty-three people um choosing the uh five city council districts and a rotating mayor. And then I think uh it was uh Nathan who had indicated that uh once people see the district maps um based on his experience with the county redrawing um districts, uh supervisory districts, that will get more participation. I I think that's true. Um the first public hearing that we will present the maps based on redistricting partners uh work is um January eleventh. Uh we will also have software available and up on our website uh the first week in January. Uh and it's a great tool that people can be at home or have meetings with communities of interest um that uh people can use the software uh to draw maps, and that has um demographic population information that you can actually move the lines and balance out populations with each of the districts. Uh but mayor, I guess to answer your final question or or the communication you provided this evening, it is critical because we do, you know, we are running on a timeline that is again dictated to us by state law. Um we actually have ninety days uh to finalize uh the district uh maps. Um we were able, through our legal counsel, able to work with the attorney um that threatened to uh litigate this. We were able to get um an extra month of time. So our ultimate deadline for adoption of districts is March first. Um we do have uh February twenty-second, though, that's a normally scheduled city council meeting, second meeting in February um that we have slated for the council to actually take final action on this.
Thank you. And um we don't really campaign found, funding limits, I believe, effective twenty twenty-two, Millbrae will fall under the new spending donation limit set by the state of California, and I can only guess at them, but that is a good discussion for the future on that.
Yeah, mayor, sorry about, and and that's a completely separate issue uh from, from what's facing the council this evening.
So um bringing it back to city council, city attorney, do I need to close the public hearing before we go to council discussion? Or do that at the end?
Whoa, I'm sorry. I pressed the wrong button. I think it would be a good idea to close the public hearing.
Okay, uh closed public hearing. We traditionally do not do that with a vote, or do you want me to do it with a vote?
I think that's fine.
Closing public hearing.
Objections from the council, right.
Okay, thank you. Bringing it back to council, I see Councilman Feng.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So um you know, I've uh talked to a number of the members of the public, and then there is a question from them, and I think it'll be uh valuable for our legal counsel to weigh in on that question. Uh if there was a decision to have an at-large mayor, how would that elected? If there was a decision to have an at-large mayor, how would that elected official? You know, how would the term limit on that, you know, work with the current term limit ordinance that we do have put in place by our voters? If John can explain that to the public would be nice.
Certainly. So we do have in our code, our Millbrae municipal code, term limits. And these term limits for council members were approved by the voters back in the late 90s. And the rule is that a council member can serve no more than two consecutive four-year terms. The rule goes on to say that if a council member is appointed to fill the balance of a vacated council seat for less than a full term, that that council person can still go on to serve two full elected four-year council terms. If we have a set, decide to have a separately elected mayor, that mayor is, would be considered a member of the council. And, but if there is a desire or a determination to have that mayor serve a two-year rather than a four-year term, which is a matter that can be determined by this city council, the rule does not directly apply. Because the rule that was developed by the city council years ago and presented to the voters really talks about two consecutive four-year terms. Does not talk about, did not conceive at that time of a member of the council serving two-year terms. So we would be presented with a situation whether we really want to, you know, nail it down and clarify it and go back to the voters. I would think that one could reasonably look at the law and say that the intention of the voters that approved this rule was to have a, an elected member of the council serve no more than eight consecutive years. But, you know, there is room to question. You know, how, whether it would apply then to the mayor with a two-year term if that is the decision of the council. So that is an issue that we may need to clarify going forward. But as I say, I think initially we can assume that if we determine a two-year term, that mayor should serve no more than four consecutive terms. I think that being elected consecutively to serve more than eight years was not anticipated and intended by the voters based on the rule that's currently in effect. Even though that rule wasn't drafted to address the situation.
So to further clarify that point, you know, city attorney would, so first of all, it would be beneficial to have tax ready for the public, number one. Number two, based on what you just explained, would it be fair to say, and I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth because you're the lawyer in the room here, that any elected official should not serve more than eight years in consecutive? Whether you're in the council member or mayoral position, would you say that's a fair assumption?
I think, I think that was the intention of the voters. The nuance here is that the stated rule does account for someone who's, who is appointed to serve an unexpired term. So, so that's, you know, that's the nuance. But I would say that the, I think the intention of the rule is for a person not to serve more than eight years in consecutively elected positions on the council. If that makes some sense. Certainly clarification may, the council may want to determine clarification that council. I have heard talk that the council may want to consider with the public and its community the notion of term limits and whether the current rule is appropriate. So this may be a subject of broader discussion in the future.
Thank you, city attorney.
Thank you, Councilman Feng. Council members? Other comments, other questions? Councilwoman Pappan. Councilman Holber, you had your hand up. You took it down, so called on Ms. Pappan.
I will concede to Councilmember Holber.
Go ahead, Reuben.
No, go ahead.
Councilwoman Pappan, it's in your court.
Okay, council statements are slightly confusing here. It made it sound like the mayor would run every two years as opposed to council members running every four years.
I think that the question that came to me, Councilmember Pappan, was, was asking what, what might happen if you have, if you make a determination for a mayor with two-year, a two-year term rather than a four-year term. The, the language in the code talks about a four-year term. And there is a matter of a decision of discretion in front of the council tonight as to whether the terms would be two years or four years.
So I'm still confused as to this two years. What's before the council, as I understand it and what the public was presented with, is whether we divide up into five districts throughout the city and a rotating mayor, given. The second option, as I understand it, is that we divide the city up into four districts and there is a city and a mayor at large.
At large.
All of which would have four-year terms. Where's this two years coming up with?
Kim, do you want to explain that there is also the decision as to whether the terms for the city council members or for the mayor at large, if you should determine to have a mayor at large, should be two years or four-year terms? That is an issue also before you.
I would like explanations on that. I don't see that as an issue. I see that as a change of the charter. So somebody want to clarify?
I can, I can.
Yeah, thank you.
My, my understanding is that you would, that all council members, whether or not they're at large or assigned to a district, would have four-year terms. I, I don't, there are other changes that might be necessary to go to two-year terms.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. But the mayor could be two or four years. Is that true?
I think a four-year term.
All right. I stand corrected. Councilwoman Pappan, you're absolutely right. So we only have four, we're only talking about four-year terms.
So just as for a matter of discussion, and I've not made up my mind here, I'm listening to what the public's preferences. And, and I think that this would mirror somewhat what exists in San Bruno now. If the decision was to have a at-large mayor, that person would serve a four-year term. And the, in coordination with that, there would be four separate districts, which would have council members. And then that other option would be kind of what exists now. We would have five districts and a rotating mayor. Just for clarification.
Is, is that to me?
I'm just clarifying for the record. If council has any right, doesn't believe I presented that correctly, please let me know.
I think, I think that was correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Holber.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not the attorney here, but that's how I interpreted, you know, the, the language that was in our term limit laws. To me, it sounds like a two-year term is not really even on the table in terms of an option. Without changing that law, it's pretty close to four-year terms. And regardless, though, I don't think, you know, even if that were an option, I don't think that would be necessarily have to be determined tonight. I think in terms of the direction that the district partners moves is whether to go from four districts or five districts. And the length of term or when certain seats are up, that would be determined later on. I guess nobody's, who wants to talk, but right now, so I guess I'll just go for it. You know, nobody here is really happy that we're here at this time. I think district elections in a city like Millbrae does not make very much sense. We're far too small to have district elections. I think most voters here in Millbrae would be supportive of the current at-large system versus the district election system. That being said, we've been advised by multiple attorneys to go this route to avoid a potentially cost of litigation. So I think we need to make the best of it. And in my opinion, going forward, the best way to do it would be to have four districts with the at-large mayor. I think that helps to enfranchise the voters more by allowing each voter to vote for two members of council instead of just one. It also would provide for a position of somebody who has to look out for the city's best interest overall, not just one, their neighborhood or their district. But also would make each of the districts a little bit bigger. So each council member is accountable to more voters and has to oversee a larger cross-section of Millbrae and a more diverse area of Millbrae. So I think, and I think also it would give that mayor position a little bit more clout in terms of the various regional boards and regional committees. If it's somebody who's there for four years versus just one year. You know, I know there may be some concerns about it and I, and I just have been thinking about this in my head a little bit. One potential option, if there are concerns about, you know, concentration of power too much in one position, would potentially be to, we would have a rotating vice mayor and perhaps some of the duties of the mayor would be, could be transitioned to a vice mayor or to another member of the council. That's a concern. But that's where I'm leaning at this point. Open to hearing from other members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holber. Question for attorneys, going back to our existing ordinance. So if we went to four districts with a mayor and we have, and I know we're not supposed to be considering current office holders, would someone who had been serving on council have to sit off two years before running for the mayor? How would that work? Could that work? Or is it, is then if we're a directly elected mayor, yes, they're part of city council, but it is its own standalone election? So I guess, how does that work with our existing ordinance?
That, that really shouldn't be part of this discussion, Mayor, if I could just give my opinion for a second, because it should not be about any one of us.
And well, it, it could be in the future. Could you let, take, I, I hear you. What if someone was a council member for two eight-year terms and then chose to run for mayor, adding a fourth, a third term? Could you do that under our existing thing because the mayor is now this separate entity?
I would say no. The mayor is going to be considered a member of the city council, whether separately elected or not. And our rule is very clear that as it states, even though it didn't anticipate this, the rule is very clear that members, elected members of the city council, which an at-large mayor would be, can only serve maximum of two elected consecutive terms.
Okay, so that's the highest set of rules and everything else would fit underneath it. Thank you. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to voice that opinion. I just feel like I want to keep about the elections completely away from my decision-making and I'm hoping that council does as well. And I totally concur almost, almost 100% with Councilmember Holber. You know, I've given this a lot of thought and the pros and cons, and I've gotten an opportunity to speak with a lot of, a lot of our residents. And I see the pros and the cons to both sides. But I think the, the key is that we are so small. And to break it into the least amount of segments that we have to, I think, is what weighs heavily on my decision. So the four with the, with the, the mayor at large also gives our residents two votes. Because they get to vote not only for their district, but also for their mayor. And I think that that's an important, that's, that's two votes. And all they need is one more for something that they want to see get passed or lobby towards. I I too am, you know, very saddened that we have to do this because a two and a half by two and a half mile radius of a city that has to be broken up is just absolutely ridiculous. And I would like to restate that it had absolutely no decision-making or any actions by which this council acted upon to get us to this position. So for any, any argument or anybody that would like to take that offline, I will, I will argue that and defend the five of us where we do not want to be here. So with that being said, I, I concur with Councilmember Holber that let's break it up into a smaller or larger pieces in a small city and allow for our residents to have two votes during the election than just one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Pappan or Councilman Feng?
I'll chime in if nobody wants to.
Go ahead, Mr. Feng.
Thank you, Gina. So I've spoken to a lot of people about this. And I think one thing that I look at is the spirit of the law here and the spirit of CBRA. I mean, what issue is it trying to solve and why do we have this legislation? It is to ensure that minority votes are not being diluted. So that they can elect their own leaders within a certain district. So that, you know, they have much greater opportunity to achieve a better diversity in our elected body, which is ultimately our decision-making body for any jurisdiction. And so therefore, having each elected council member, assuming that we're able to achieve more diversity on our council by, you know, following the CBRA and and doing district election, to have an opportunity for each council member to rotate into the mayoral position would also serve the purpose and the spirit of the CBRA. So that every council member from different background, right, even different ethnic background as well, to have, actually have an opportunity to serve as the leadership position within our city. And I think that is the spirit of it. So, and among many of the speaker who spoke before us, I also attended a Saturday meeting as well and spoke to practically every person who attended the meeting. You know, most people that I've spoken to have also preferred a five district with a rotational mayor. So that would be my recommendation moving forward here to ensure there is equity. And also having opportunity for every council member to serve in their mayoral position. And so that at the same time, you know, every council member will have an opportunity and continue to encourage every council member to look at issues that, you know, that would benefit, you know, the entire city. And also, you know, focus more on the benefit of the entire city. And I think so that's the benefit of having five districts and a rotation mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Feng. Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you. Again, this is a very tough decision in that everybody I've spoken to, and I think the vast majority of the community doesn't want to be in this position at all. Despite the circumstances which we are currently in and we're not by any choice of this council or the city manager. This has been brought to us. I find it difficult dividing the city up into any pieces as to how it would resolve alleged violations of the Voters Rights Act. And again, these are alleged, nothing has been established. But we are doing so to avoid potential litigation in the future. And I wish more of the public were in I wish more of the public were involved in this process. I am leaning towards, as was represented by Councilmember Fung here. I think giving people an opportunity to lead is important and really kind of gives some equity. These are communities of interest. We have several throughout our city. And as was explained during the presentation, they, they could be based on age, ethnicity. Somebody mentioned white wine drinkers versus red wine drinkers. I mean, there are so many different communities of interest here that we are trying to represent. And we want to encourage everybody to be a part of this process. I can tell you, every single member of this council, we campaign, we knock on doors, we talk to people throughout the city and that is the best experience and the best education anyone could have and should have if you're running for office. So to kind of limit that to like one area or I mean, it's, it's sad. We really want to get to know the public so that we can represent them and the best way is having just at-large because we get to go everywhere and talk to everyone. And we must, I would hope that everyone still does that, no matter what the decision of this council is. So I think what we need to emphasize here too is the least amount of change for the public is that they're kind of used to five members at this point in time and that everybody has an opportunity to lead or become the mayor if they can reach consensus with their colleagues as is currently established here. I think that's important. And this is to say too, if we make the decision right now to do four districts and a mayor or five districts and a rotating mayor, we can change that or a future council can change that at a later date as long as we maintain the distribution of the maps in an equitable manner. So I would lean, and it's kind of, I would lean more towards the five districts and a rotating mayor at this point in time. I do have one question for legal counsel though. If the decision were to go four districts and a mayor, would that not take place after the current council has rotated through the process? Or would it take place immediately? In other words, we have an existing rotation?
I'm gonna lick.
Yeah, so it's a combination of those things. So it's basically a transition. So you won't all be in districts until the second election. And where the mayor falls is going to be up to the order of elections. He'll decide when you can be ordered of elections, what districts go when.
So right now, we just finished a three-cycle election. So three council members were up for election. And then the next cycle, it's two council members. So we would decide whether we rotate in the mayor at the, the next election or the following one with three council members? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes, exactly right.
Okay, so I would recommend to this council that we are making more than the one decision. And if it were to go to four and a mayor at large, that that happens when three council members are elected so that we can finish the cycle and ease through this process. But I am leaning at this point in time to five districts and a rotating mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, so we've got a split right now.
If I may say one more thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Fung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've also, you know, throughout this process, I've also, you know, looked at and studied some of the other jurisdictions who already gone to district election. Some of them gone to district election quite some time ago. And you, we've seen some phenomena happening after the district election being instigated in some of those jurisdictions where there's a lot of districting decisions, like certain district is up for certain grants or certain decisions, you know, being made with regards to a certain development within a certain district. That particular district representative would have to weigh in first and have to sort of guide the rest of the elected body. And there's a lot of these sort of districting politics going on and that's not necessarily helpful. So I think by having a rotational mayor would help eliminate some of that stuff and encouraging everybody to have an opportunity to represent the entire city. Which I think overall would be a bit healthier moving forward here. So if that adds to the value of our discussion, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Okay, so it sounds like we're a two-two. I have gone back and forth on this. It should come as no surprise that I think the protocol in choosing mayors has not been as nice or as open as it should be. So I support the public when they've said they'd like to get that handled in an ordinance. It's out of the hands of the existing council members that way and that's much cleaner. I think both council, I think Councilman Fung made some good points in terms of allowing everyone opportunity. I can tell you, this is my one time as mayor, given the way the current protocols are, and it has been wonderful and it has been exhausting. And I don't know, I think, I think I remember seeing Councillor Mayor Lee at the end saying, it's been a great year, but it's, it's time to give somebody else an opportunity. It is more work on that. I think the most important thing that the mayor does is voting on some regional body, regional, pardon me, regional elections. But the mayor also assigns other council members to activities. And I think with my lofty six years now, I think I'm, Councilman Fung and I have served the fewest number of years. For certain committees, it takes a long time to gain knowledge base on that. So sometimes it's really great when we keep our council duties. More of these are regional things that the public doesn't necessarily pay attention to. But, you know, council, the mayor does get to assign these. And I guess in that case, I think it is better to have a rotating mayor and five districts. I do like the point that four districts would put more people in a district, given how small we are. But the, frankly, the only way I will support a five-district map is if we change the way the mayor rotation has been handled in the last 20 years. So that's where I'm at. That looks like unless someone has changed her mind, we have a three-two on this. I believe we need to make a formal motion if there is someone there to make a formal motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for moving forward, have a five district and a rotational mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappan. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Holibur?
Nay.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Nay.
Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
The city council adopts a resolution to establish a district-based election system for city council members with five districts. And a city council selected rotating mayor pursuant to Elections Code, Section 10010 by a vote of three to two.
Thank you all. Thank you, City Council. This is rough work to Gabriella and to the, to the public. Our timeline is very tight and it is dictated by law. Gabriella and redistricting, I don't have your full type, full company name, I'm sorry. Today's been a long day for me. They would like all, as many of your communities of interest turned into them so that they can take them into account as they draw the maps. I'm sure the city manager can do a better job on this, but I believe our next council meeting with a new mayor will be January 11th. And the maps have to be presented to the public seven days, it's seven days or nine days in advance? City Manager or Gabriella?
Seven.
Seven days in advance.
Have to be presented to the public seven days.
Advance. So, so that means that our redistricting map-making company will not get a winter holiday. But if you could please, please get your communities of interest using the website. I did hear from several of you that you had a difficulty using the website. Feel free to contact Eduardo at 259-2414 and he can help you get, make sure that we're collecting the communities of interest information. And please try to do it before December 23rd so they can be taken account in the maps that we will be seeing on January 11 minus seven days. Is that January 4th?
January 4th, Mayor. They'll be available.
January 4th. On that. Are there any other, thank you to the public for all of your comments. Thank you for being here tonight on us.
Quick question, Madam Mayor.
Uh huh.
And after the district maps are drawn and hopefully, we hope this doesn't ever happen, but if someone doesn't run from a district, what happens?
I think they, at least what's happened in the other cities that have gone to districts, they end up appointing. I think we're going to learn in the first couple of cycles how well or how poorly districting works. And right now, from everyone I spoke to at, at the League of California Cities Conference in September, cities that have been districting for a while, they end up having fewer candidates running.
So we would just add that it's either, and, and our city attorney can correct me, but it's either the council would appoint or it just remains vacant until the next election.
Or you could call a special election.
You could call a special election later.
We could, we could pay for a special election, but that should be part of our, our ordinance when we put this together that we decide whether there should be an appointment or a vacancy.
Excellent point, Vice Mayor.
Also, I'm sorry, and also at the same time, you know, if, even if we were to choose to appoint somebody, what would be the criteria? That appointee would need to live within that district and if someone were too willing to be appointed, why wouldn't they throw their name in to run to begin with? Because if there's only one candidate, you know, filed to run, they would automatically be elected without being.
Right, which is what happened in Redwood City on the last election cycle. And I think happened in Menlo Park, but I could, could get it wrong.
Yeah, I don't think you can force anyone to run or put in an application for appointment, but it's, it's just a thought here. I would think that we might be able to avoid any such circumstance if we actually develop some sort of a, what do they call it, that a lot of cities do, like an education forum for people, citizens workshop?
Leadership Academy.
A leadership academy.
And then also with, with the formation of this new ordinance that we're going to get into, the signatures that are required to submit your application, do they have to come from the district or do they come from the city? So all of that needs to be looked at.
And thoroughly explained, yes.
Yeah, I, I believe that is probably ruled by the election code and it would have to come from the district, but we'll clarify that. I wanted to be clear, I haven't looked at the rules on vacancy for a long time. But if we have four-year terms, which we are continuing to have and we and someone doesn't run, I don't think you can leave a council seat vacant for four years. I think that there would be either an appointment or a special election. I think the fear is, and I'll have to refresh my recollection with the law, that the County Board of Supervisors can step in and make an appointment if, if, if you just leave it vacant, if nothing happens.
But Joan, could we write in our ordinance that if in fact the district elections are not able to fill a position in that district, that, that the appointment could be, or the appointment could be from out of district? Does it say in, in Sheikman's lawsuit that we can't do that?
Kim, I, I'm gonna look.
The, the person who takes a district seat has to be from that district.
Yeah, but, but by election, this is all about election. So if we write into our city ordinance, if, if in fact nobody runs, if there's council can appoint from outside the district?
I think redistricting partners would be the best to answer that question.
Perfect. So maybe we could, because all those details are going to be incredibly important.
I would think they'd have to live within the district.
My gut tells me they have to live within the district, but.
Isn't this legislated already under the government code? So it's a matter of researching general law of the state of California under the government code, I would think. So we should.
I think in order to maintain the Voters Rights Act, we need to figure that out.
Right.
I guess Congress, you don't actually have to live within the district. So there are different rules.
Right. That's what I was thinking. Congress, you don't have to live in the district to get that appointment.
That's true.
So.
And what's the residence requirement? I mean, what if someone wants to be appointed or elected in a certain district, but they came from a different district and promised to move in after getting elected? You know, I think some of that.
I think you have to be registered to vote there at the time.
Can I?
At the time that you file the papers.
We have one more.
And through the remainder of your term.
Correct.
City Manager, I think you said that this is going, it, there's existing law. If our attorneys could look at this, I am trying to remember the workshop that I went to in Sacramento, but I believe, given that this will go into effect for the November 2022 election, that we have to get all our documents in order. No, I think, well, I could be wrong, but I thought this is going in in 2022. And the documents have to be filed by April? Or am I getting the April for the June primaries confused?
I think you're getting April for June.
So we're getting August, probably August for the November election.
The general rule is always 88 days before the election. So it's usually the second week in August.
Can I say the fun just keeps on coming?
And may I say that's for candidates, but for us as a city, to get the districts to the register of voters, I believe we have a May deadline for that.
Okay, I knew there was a deadline coming.
There's two different deadlines that we're talking.
Yes. So, so we, we have a few more months after that, but I think everyone brought up really good points. Let's make sure our ordinance is crystal clear on that. It, it just saves hurt feelings all the way around that way. Okay, any other comments for tonight? To Javier, I've got to pull your names up to our translators. Thank you so much tonight. I know it is work. We are grateful for your help tonight. And with that, we are going to let you go home and we're going to move to our last agenda item. But let me make sure I recognize all of you. I just have to get to a different document. Thank you to Prudence Miller and Ting Li, Javier Vargas and Andrea Saudi. Thank you so much for your assistance tonight. And I'm sure we will see you back in 2022. Okay, with that, closing this agenda item and moving on to our last agenda item, this is consider directing staff to draft an urgency ordinance related to Senate Bill 9, which is the four units on a single-family home ordinance. And I see some hands raised already, but staff is going to go ahead and give a report on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, Tom Williams, City Manager. So real quick, Senate Bill 9, SB 9, was signed by the governor on September 16th of this year and becomes effective January 1st of 2022. And basically, the bill requires a proposed housing development containing two residential units within a single-family zone to be considered a ministerial action. That means without any discretionary review or without any public hearing or due process on the action. And if the proposed housing development meets, you know, if it meets certain requirements under, under the law. And SB 9 also requires that a local agency administratively approve urban lot splits. And urban lot splits will be defined here in a few minutes by, by law with our Community Development Director, Ms. Darcy Smith. But the urban lot splits in a single-family residential zone, if it meets certain criteria, has a minimum lot size of 1,200 square feet, of which you can have one unit, or actually two units rather, on the, on the urban lot split. But one unit per 1,200 square feet. But in both cases, the city may apply objective zoning standards, objective subdivision standards and objective design standards. As you may recall, the city council approved the contract with a planning consulting firm. With a planning consulting firm who is preparing an ordinance, uh, for SB nine. Uh, it will not be available for adoption or consideration of adoption, uh, until late spring or early summer. Um, so with that, we did receive a request, uh, from a council member, uh, to discuss an urgency ordinance to help further. You know, protect the city's interest in affordable housing and to clarify density, um, when it comes to urban lot splits. So with that, I would like to introduce our community development director, Ms. Darcy Smith, for an additional presentation. And then we would be happy to open it up for, uh, questions. This is a, if the council decides to take action, we have noticed this as an action item. And, uh, but also as, as information.
And city manager, because this is an, this is an emergency ordinance, correct?
Uh, well, it's, it's, so this is a discussion about moving, you know, getting council's direction to come back with an urgency ordinance. So.
Okay.
Um, just like other items, when we received.
So it's a simple majority vote.
No, uh, an urgency ordinance would be a four-fifth vote.
Right, but we wouldn't be doing that until next Wednesday.
Well, it depends on the discussion, the direction of the council tonight. And, and so I will state though. You know, in, in discussions with, uh, Ms. Smith and, uh, inquiries that we have received, we've only received one inquiry so far. And, uh, you know, if, you know, and I know time is of the essence. But as we discuss this, I, I understand that a couple of cities have already adopted urgency ordinance. There's information floating around. Um, you know municipalities and I'm, I'm, I'm sure Ms. Casman, our city attorney, could weigh in here as well. Um, that already there's threats of lawsuits. So I think as we have this discussion this evening. Um, there's certainly, you know, more questions than answers. Um, but if we, if we do come back with an urgency ordinance. We also believe that we can, you know, go back, study things and get information and, and also bring it back on January eleventh. And, and not, you know, harm the, the city in terms of the timing, uh, right now, but we can address that as we get into to further. Discussion with the city council.
Thank you, city manager.
The chair, is it, is it, is it possible that we would just be able to hold off on this whole thing until the next meeting? And we're, we're over time here on thirty five minutes? And it's not an, it's an emergency ordinance, but it's not an emergency. And if we could just, uh. Take the material facts that other cities, uh, can, can bring to the table for the next meeting, maybe, maybe we have this discussion.
Well, I, I think Councilman Holibur asked for this and with this news, it's not really a new system. It's a city manager having us live to our existing protocols. Um, Mr. Holibur. Do you have thoughts? I'm happy to spend time tonight and work through it.
Yeah, if we can move quicker on it tonight, I mean, SB nine goes into effect, uh, January one. Uh, the only meeting we have scheduled between now and then is, uh, the reorganization meeting. I don't think we'll want to be discussing this then. Um, so I would appreciate if we can give staff. Whether or not to move forward at this time.
We, we don't, we don't have to make this decision for this emergency ordinance till January eleventh.
Well, except people can begin filing applicant, I'm sorry, Reuben.
But we can still make, we could still, we can still file this.
We could, we would be missing out on, uh, basically a ten day.
A ten day window, and I'm concerned about the ten day window. So I think we're going to go ahead. Uh, staff, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, uh, give me a second. Can you see? The PowerPoint?
Now you're coming in great.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members at. My name is Darcy Smith, the City Millbury Community Development Director. I'll be making this presentation, which again for the audience. Is more of a study session format to consider directing staff to draft an urgency ordinance related to SB nine. The urgency ordinance has not been drafted. So we're still, um, looking for policy feedback. Um, if we're directed to prepare that urgency ordinance and return at a future meeting for review and action. But quick background, I have a few slides. We may have some new audience members, um, to SB nine, as it's affectionately called. It was signed by Governor Newsom. Um, and when it will be effective January first, twenty twenty two, and essentially allows, as the city manager mentioned, for creation of up to four new dwelling units. On a single family parcel, uh, the property does have to be zoned, single family, and I'll show a graphic that shows that, what this looks like in a minute. And there are extensive specified standards and conditions in state law that I won't recite, um, but I included. The complete statute as an attachment staff report, you can access it online because there are standard baseline conditions. One of the most relevant ones I'll just point out is that the property cannot have been renter occupied in the last three years. Um, the city has ability to regulate the process and the manner of development. permitted within limits provided by that state law by local ordinance. So as the manager mentioned, we are moving forward with our local ordinance. Um, it's just not quite ready yet. In full form. So quickly, what can be built on these single family zone lots being subdivided? And I'll show a graphic in a minute that shows it in more detail, but proprietors can build two homes on each of two new lots. That's a total of four units. Assuming, uh, minimum lot sizes are met. And if there's existing units, new homes can be added to, and I'll show what that looks like up to a maximum of four potential units. Um, jurisdictions may choose to prohibit more units. Those are. The accessory dwelling units or ADUs and junior accessory dwellings or JADUs. Um, and that is something that's up to the local jurisdiction that could be enacted, that I'll touch on later under the policy considerations. Homes are maybe subject to objective rules, objective standards, um, as long as they don't preclude two eight hundred square foot units. So this is a neat little graphic of what it looks like. And I realize this is a lot to look at. Um, a lot of text here, but essentially it just shows you what you can build on different lot configurations such as vacant lots. Lots with single family homes, lots with non-conforming units, or even a lot that already has a single family home and an ADU. And essentially. Um, if you look at the bottom row, it's essentially up to about four units, but there are just a lot of caveats. Um, and as this is new legislation, you know, all the local jurisdictions are still combing through it. Um, but I thought this was a, a helpful graphic that kind of shows in a nutshell what can be proposed. So. Local policy considerations. Well, there's a lot, and to be honest, there's probably pages and pages that we'll ultimately want to bring back to you.
Hey, Darcy, I, I, I hate to butt in, but, um, somehow, uh, council member Pappin got disconnected and so she's logging back in. Can we just take a, a quick pause, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
And good, I wanted you to go back to that graphic so I can absorb it.
Think she's back in.
Thank you, city clerk. Welcome back, Councilwoman Pappin. We waited for you. Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Okay, so I was just wrapping up this slide that shows a nice graphic and happy to come back to it later, but again, um. One of the major policy considerations that the city could consider is just would you consider limiting the number of units, um. As authorized by state statute and that largely, um, would limit it. Um, and not, not allow accessory dwelling units or JADUs, which you'll see here kind of represented. So there's some key local policy considerations and I, I mentioned, there's a huge list. It goes on and on. And because this is brand new law, um, cities and our attorneys are still working through lists of look what we. What I would consider the local policy considerations and ultimately our plan is to bring it back. Um, for community input through a community meeting. And a joint city council planning commission study session, which is the forum that, that we typically take low policy. Um, items to you at and get feedback, but the shortlist, which was prepared by city staff and. Our legal counsel for this purposes of the urgency ordinance is abbreviated and the number one thing that our. Our attorneys said we should examine, um, in a timely manner was whether we want to limit the number of units on each parcel. So local agencies under state law are not required to allow accessory dwellings or the chose junior ADUs. On parcels that utilize both the urban lot split, again, as defined state law and the two unit development provision. So that's something for consideration. Um, but again, absent a local law, a local ordinance, state law would prevail. And, um, it does not have that restriction. Um, another thing to consider is affordability requirements. This is something that other cities have considered. And there's nothing in SB nine, as it appears interpreted now, limiting the imposition of affordability requirements. Um, however, as you know, having just adopted inclusionary requirements, the city usually provides, um, a detailed analysis. Around that, um, but what staff and our attorneys would proffer as a starting point for consideration would be. That every one of, out of two units created pursuant to SB nine would be deed restricted for fifty five years. To occupancy by low income households. Um, fifty five years is a standard deed restriction term and occupancy by low income household is what we would recommend here. But the council may consider other affordability levels. So some lesser policy considerations, just in terms of, of the magnitude of it, um, and these. Sort of best practices that, that even absent an urgency ordinance, um, we think are a good idea and we would. Enact administratively is some sort of checks and balances. So state law has a lot of requirements, again, um, for what. What would qualify to utilize and build under, under this provision. And one of the most important one, as I mentioned, um. Is around occupancy of the unit for the last three years by the property owner. And so jurisdictions are looking at. Requiring an owner occupancy affidavit form with the applications. So the owner would certify under penalty of perjury, um. That they've lived there. And that's again, for an important checks and balance. And the other thing would be a deed restriction on the opposite end stating that the applicant intends to reside in one of the units that was created. For three years. And again, that's enacting state law, but it would, um, be that checks and balances in place. And last, a restricted covenant to provide for prohibition on non-residential use of any unit developed or construction. Constructed through the two unit development and including a prohibition against renting or leasing the units of short-term residential rentals. Other policy considerations, last slide would be a provision to prohibit no further subdivision of the parcels created by SB nine. And another thing would be setbacks. So there's a huge list, again, pages of potential objective development standards. That the city will consider in our larger ordinance, but this was sort of a quick one that I thought we could toss out for consideration. Because state law is clear that cities cannot require more than four foot required rear side setbacks. Um, but without a local ordinance, um, there, there's zero. So I thought, well, maybe we should look at just setting. Uh, the maximum under state law because setbacks do provide an important. Um, privacy and, um, privacy buffer to adjacent property owners and lighten air to the, the new units. Um, last, um, we've had many conversations in the past about replacement housing provisions. So I just wanted to point out that. Um, one thing to think about in the urgency ordinance was again, would again be a checks and balances confirm. Reiterating that state law requires compliance with replacement housing provisions. Um, which is a lot of text and I didn't want to include it here, but you can check, take a look at it real quick if you're interested. And that any, if any existing dwelling unit is proposed to be demolished as part of this. SB nine proposal that again, they require compliance with that. So that's the end of my shortlist. And again, I just want to emphasize, we'll, as part of the official or formal ordinance. Have a lot more to talk to you about in this area. There's a lot of things the city can consider. Um, through our objective development standards that we want to come back to you about. Um, but this is what we thought might present the greatest, um, concern to. Um, an urgency ordinance which would meet this, the state criteria to be necessary for. The immediate preservation of public peace, health and safety. That's the requirements under the government code. Um, and another reminder is an urgency ordinance does require, um. For affirmative votes to be effective. So it's another thing that we'd like to get your feedback on tonight. So that concludes my staff report and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I see at least one member of the public on comment. Counsel, any questions before opening it for public comment?
I, I have one question, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Please go ahead.
So, uh, on page two of the staff report, uh, this question is for, uh, I, I guess, you know, either the legal counsel or Darcy. Uh, it says, you know, these SB nine, you know, essentially conforms to project that have, project that are conformed. To objective zoning subdivision and design review standards shall be approved ministerially. Uh, and are not subject to CQ review. And they are required, uh, they are or they are not required to pay the city impact fees.
Uh, Darcy Smith, Community Development Director, they are required to pay development impact fees and all other permit fees for the project.
Right, but they're not subject to CQ reviews.
Correct.
I see. And therefore, uh, no, no public hearing at all whatsoever, meaning if someone would just come back and say, you know, I'm in our own zone. There's currently, you know, on a eight thousand square foot lot with an eight hundred square foot house, they can come in with an application, tear it down. And they'll say a two unit building so long as they fit within the objective standards, whatever. The objective standard that we do currently have. Uh, then they would not even require noticing, hearing at all whatsoever and they'll be approved by the staff.
Correct, that's correct.
Just want to make sure the public understands that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fun. Uh, other council members, if not, I got a couple of quick questions. Uh, Ms. Smith, in your slides, you said that, uh, a property that has been rented for more than three years wouldn't qualify. What would hap- and then what happens if there's a house that's been sitting vacant for three years or two years? My, the house next door to me has been vacant for over two years now, so I'm just curious.
Wow, well, I knew you would have a lot of questions tonight that I wasn't quite ready.
Don't worry, hang on to that one, hang on to that one. I think we should look at vacant properties because I think we have, there's always some that are in. You know, uh, someone's, a family member has passed on, so it's, it's in the legal system, but we have vacant homes. The other one, then you talked about a home office. I know that a good friend of mine, two houses down, ran her business out of her office. She's now moved, but that home office exists. If they wanted to use SB nine, would they then have to give up their home office?
Um, no, a home occupation as allowed under the zoning code would be permitted. But a dramatic change to, let's say, a restaurant. Or a, a completely non-residential use, um, an industrial use or a restaurant, something. Complete, uh, yoga studio that's no one, no one's living there, that would be prohibited.
Okay.
And there's other provisions in, in our zoning code that would stop that, but that's just something to consider.
The last two, in the staff report, you have a section of language we might want to consider on allowing affordable housing for fifty five years. Um, that sounds good to me, given that most of the new housing laws the state has enacted are actually hurting. Affordable units, not creating more affordable units. Is that doable? I know it's in the staff report and it sounded good.
I'll defer to the city attorney on that. We've been doing a lot of research on that too. Um, but maybe Ms. Casman has an answer on that.
Yeah, so you're, you're asking, i- is that, i- i- is it?
Could we actually, so a, a one house with or without an existing ADU. Decides to subdivide and create four units and two of those units would have to be affordable. The same way we're holding all of the other apartment developers to that fifty three, fifty five year rule. I would imagine in time that becomes really hard to administer, but i- i- if you think it's doable. I think it's something that could go in with an emergency ordinance.
Um, do I think you have the authority to consider it? Now, now, you know, the. Um, I think you have the authority to consider it.
Okay. Then my last question, I thought SB nine did not allow the demolition of properties in order to build new properties. So I got a little confused on that last pic, piece there, uh, the last bullet on your last slide.
There's some carve-outs there. There, there's just a little bit of a carve-out. It's not much, um, but I think it could happen.
Yeah, I, I already think we're demolishing too many perfectly good homes because people have enough money to do that. And from an environmental perspective, all building materials have something called embodied energy. There's energy through the entire supply chain of that material plus sun that created wood. So I, 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 I'm very disappointed when we keep allowing more demolitions instead of a, a reasonable remodel. So those are my questions. Counsel, any other questions? If not, I'm going to open it up to the public. Mr. Dunham, welcome back to Millbury.
Uh, good evening, counsel. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak again. Uh, it's nice to see you all. I, I wanted to. Just a by way of introduction, I'm a lead with Peninsula for everyone. Uh, we've, uh, support affordable housing and sustainability on the peninsula. And we're big supporters of SB nine as, uh, a means for building more housing in neighborhoods that are otherwise very expensive to. Buy or rent in. Uh, as you might have seen, the, uh, median home price in Millbury has now exceeded two million dollars for a single family. For a single family home, which is extraordinarily expensive. So SB nine will allow more affordable housing types to be built in neighborhoods that are otherwise two million dollar homes. Want to just comment on some of the legal issues. I think doing this as an urgency ordinance is actually pretty legally fraught. You need to make, if you were to do that, you need to make declarations about immediately preserving public health. And safety is not clear that the lack of an affordability requirement on a duplex. Is an immediate threat to public health and safety. And I think if I were a homeowner who wanted to use this bill. And was frustrated at whatever policy decisions you make, I would very much seek counsel for. Whether or not that justification holds up under the Brown Act. You'd be much better off doing this through regular order, which is basically what every other city. Save one in San Mateo County is doing. No one, very few cities are doing this urgency ordinance. Second, I strongly urge you not to make a BMR requirement. Portola Valley, they looked at that. And their legal counsel suggests that would be considered confiscatory and subject to legal dispute. If you want to put any kind of requirements, make it a fee. But if you make it a BMR requirement, that's potentially opening up you to lawsuits. And I suggest you talk to other other cities about it, in large part because it will render these these developments infeasible. And you will likely be sued by homeowners or housing advocates.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Kelsey Baines, please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, counsel. My name is Kelsey Baines. Like Mike, I am with Peninsula for Everyone. And we supported this legislation and we're proud to to see it pass. Because duplexes and small multifamily units make neighborhoods more inclusive. In my own personal experience, when I was young, my parents got divorced. And a duplex allowed my mom to have a house that she could afford to buy and give us stability. When she was the sole earner for our household. And. I will also share that I live in a multi generational household right now. And something that we have considered. But would currently be illegal and would be legalized under SB nine would be to simply extend the wall behind me. Put a kitchen that on the other side of this wall is another kitchen. And it could create two units without any demolition or any. Addition to the outside of the house. So it could look exactly the same on the outside, house exactly the same number of people. But do so in a more comfortable manner that gives people more privacy. So I think that the deed restriction, although I I do believe it's well intentioned. Could really harm families in your community who want housing units that are going to meet. Throughout their lifespan, because our our housing needs change as we get older, as people have children. So we want to give families the flexibility to have housing that meets their needs later in life. And I think I'll leave it at that. Mike, Mike handled the the more technical comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baines. I don't see any other hands raised, so doing a last call. Nathan. Mr. Chan, please go ahead.
Yeah, yes. Thanks, thanks so much for this opportunity to talk before you again about this important matter. I wanted to sort of talk to the city council about sort of comparing and contrasting. How the city council reacted to state ADU legislation compared to SB nine. You know, I think the city took its time to develop an ADU ordinance. I think most people in the council think it could have, and the public thought it should have arrived sooner. But, you know, for quite a while. Millbrae was operating under state law default and it didn't feel like the sky fell in terms of. Neighborhoods being disrupted in any huge way. So I suspect that something similar will happen with SB nine if the implementation. If an urgency ordinance is not passed and the planning department and the council takes the time to craft something deliberately. That addresses all the nuances that are required. One other thing I would say, too, is with respect to the deed restriction, if that a deed restriction without any mechanism. To fund the affordable housing, whether municipal, county or state, is basically dead on arrival. It won't produce any affordable units. And so it will have the effect of just not producing any units whatsoever. It might be better to apply in lieu fee instead. And I want to remind the council that when you considered the affordable housing fee fees. Earlier this year, it stopped at five units. And so, you know, does it make sense to apply it down to two units? If it doesn't make sense there, then it should, then a deed restriction should be applied to two units as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Rayanne? And if you could please give us your full name.
Hello, my name is Ryan Modashemi. I am just commenting to echo what I heard from Kelsey Baines's and Nathan Chan's. Comments, I I would say that. I've heard of a lot of other cities kind of thinking about like, oh, let's see what like these cities try. And see how they, what controversy, controversy, et cetera, they get embroiled in potentially with. Kind of passage of an urgency ordinance early on. And I would just suggest maybe. It might be a good idea to not try and be the cannery in the coal mine about trying to implement something quickly. Think what Mr. Chan said about having a deliberative process. Is 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 a good idea for this. And it's something that, as I understand, was implemented with ADUs. And I think that, you know, like this law as it was crafted is for moderate upzoning. And I doubt that you're going to see like a flurry of. Like SB nine applications that come in super quickly in between now and when you can get an ordinance in. Next year. So I would, I would suggest a more deliberative. Seasoned and. Considerate approach going into next year. And I would just add by saying that I think that. The provision of housing is one of the most important things that a city council should do. And it should be. And it should be possible to build more housing in all neighborhoods. In Millbrae. So I think that trying to craft a law that. An ordinance that allows for more housing is going to be important for us to. For us to solve or address the housing crisis and all the inequities that it has brought. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jim Wong. Go ahead, Ms. Wong.
Oh, thank you. As homeowner, I I I'm hoping that council. Take whatever action necessary to minimize the impact of SB nine on our single housing zone neighborhoods. I think, as I understand SB nine, it it potentially can create problems that we're not fully anticipated. That we're fully, fully prepared to handle congestion. Parking, infrastructure, I think, I I understand the intent of SB nine and and what it's trying to achieve. But on the other, on the other hand, I I would like to make sure that our single family neighborhoods are not destroyed in any way. And that we retain the 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 environment that we all bought our homes in and hope that they will stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Okay, public last call for any comments. Going, Jordan Grimes, go ahead, Ms. Mr. and Ms. Grimes.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good evening, good evening, council, honorable mayor. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a lead member of Peninsula for Everyone, as well as the political director of the Peninsula Young Democrats. My comments are my own tonight, though. I just want to very quickly chime in and second the points made by Mike, Nathan and Kelsey. I want to specifically highlight the points around applying a fee to SB nine units rather than an inclusionary percentage. A fee would allow the city to capture money. To use to purchase property and then work with nonprofit developers to to build an affordable housing project somewhere in the city. I think that has a much greater chance of actually producing affordable housing than the inclusionary percentage. With the inclusionary percentage, duplexes are already going to be very expensive to build. I I think that's going to, I think an inclusionary percentage would would deter that. I think a fee would actually help the city recoup more affordable housing in the long run. Develop, for nonprofit developers can use, you know, land and tax credits. You know, via the fee to to build more affordable housing. So I would say that that probably makes more sense. And that's really it. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Okay, last call. Going once, gone twice, closing public comment, bringing it back to council. If we can go back, there we go, full screen. It is lovely to have the housing advocate show up to our council meetings. But I will reiterate what one councilwoman said two weeks ago. We have four hundred and eighty eight housing units at the BART station on hold because of high speed rail. And not one housing entity stood up for us. And our Assemblyman Mullin had his annual meeting. So going back to that one, we welcome you to come and help stand with us for housing we have already approved. That's on a transit corridor. And it would be nice if you weren't just doing one size fit all laws at the state level. But that you work with us on local housing. Next topic, Kevin, Assemblyman Mullin had a a meeting with elected officials, local elected officials last week. And he actually showed an interest to learn where SB three thirty, I talked about how SB three thirty has actually hurt. Affordable housing hurt our ability, unlike having a developer agreement where with the help of Councilman Holibur. We got a hundred housing units of affordability or twenty five percent. And now on a project, we're getting fifteen percent and really of them, only eleven new units since they're tearing down eight existing units. So these housing laws have impacts on local government that are not intended. And the assembly would would like to hear from us from the city on those. So with that.
Mayor, real quick, the SB three thirty is not fifteen percent, it's five percent.
Five percent. Well, there we go. There's a problem with three thirty. So that's just my update because we're, we haven't had a chance to do an update. Councilman Holibur, go ahead. Where would you like us to go?
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, for placing this on the agenda tonight. Nice to hear from all the public speakers. And I think as Community Development Director Smith mentioned. You know, we are working on a permanent ordinance. There are a number of issues that need to be worked out. And it will take quite a bit of time. You know, one of the realities with SB nine is, you know, it basically eliminates decades of careful. Community based planning and zoning just with the stroke of the governor's pen. And it will take us a little bit of time to unpack that and what that means for Millbrae, what our needs are going to be. I think it's very clear right now, affordable housing is a huge need in Millbrae. And I think one of the biggest flaws with SB nine is that it does not guarantee that a single affordable unit will be built. One of the speakers mentioned homeownership now is over two million dollars, the average housing price in Millbrae. And that's, I think, before speculators had the ability to put up to four units on one lot. So I can only imagine what it's going to be once this goes into effect. The few, you know, more modest homes in Millbrae. Whatever three bedroom, you know, ranch homes that are still out there will be gone fairly soon. If that's the man goes into effect as as written. So I think this urgency ordinance is incredibly important. It will help us bide some time and make sure that the biggest needs. In Millbrae are being met and that is not micro area. I mean, there's a lot of market rate housing in the pipeline right now. But it's affordable below market rate housing and fees and other. You know, in lose fees, that's something that we can look at perhaps with the permanent ordinance. But I think it's important to get this on books and also to make sure that, to be clear that. ADUs and JADUs will not be permitted under SB nine lot split. Because the way I see that is potentially there could be eight units on one, even at one fairly small parcel. The ADUs and JADUs are permitted as well. So I think that's incredibly important to keep. In the urgency ordinance and I encourage the council to support this and for staff to move on this and get it approved before January first. Thank you. And I'm available for a special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holibur.
I didn't quite hear the end of Councilmember Holibur's comments.
I said I'm available for a special meeting at any time between now and January first to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Other comments, council? This is to give direction to staff on what to do. We've heard direction from Councilman Holibur.
I would concur with Councilmember Holibur. I think this would, this definitely needs to have another meeting. So I will support this tonight, Councilmember Holibur. But it, I will support going forward with this, but I really, really want to get the details nailed in. And see if we can't. Not rush into it like the way SB nine was written, rushed and not thought through. So. I'm going to support it, but I definitely believe that this needs more than twenty minutes at nine thirty to get through.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Pappman, and then City Manager. I see you, Tom.
Um, the City Manager can go before me.
Okay, City Manager?
Well, I, yeah, I'll let the council go. I just, just some clarity there on. Support, but need need more time. We're, we have two different kind of directions here. But but I'll, I'll address that after the council's done with their discussion.
Okay, Councilwoman Pappman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, for the housing advocates, as the mayor clearly stated. There are four hundred and eighty eight units that we need your support on, twenty five or twenty percent affordable. And we're not getting it, which is disturbing when we think about this current legislation here. And we have been. SB three thirty has negatively impacted us when we're trying to do affordable units, as the mayor noted. One project, they took us to court on and we only came out with five percent affordable. When we would prefer fifteen or more percent. So we are doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing here, which is increasing density. And really fighting for affordable units. And that was the idea about our ADU legislation. We are not sidestepping any of this, but to say you can come in and just offer a fee for affordability and build somewhere else. We're only three point two square miles. We don't have land to put up affordable. Housing projects anywhere. We did already, right across the street from that pancake house, all affordable. That was in the redevelopment days or whatever the funding was, but we don't have that anymore. So we're trying to make this happen here. What's disturbing, and I think. That SB nine is problematic is as to the affordability aspect of it. The not subject to CQ. I mean, that is really, as Councilmember Holibur noted, a lot of planning goes into cities. And it's not that we're, we are not trying to avoid our housing requirements. We're trying to make them happen in the appropriate manner. But I do believe setbacks are important. I do believe ADUs are important. And then just to say, throw that out the window because one size fits all on SB nine. I don't think that's appropriate here. We are trying to do exactly what. Is needed here, and that is the affordability. Elements of housing, not just any housing, because it's just going to keep going up and up and up. The prices for homes, whether you put two, four, six, eight on a lot, they're still going to be millions of dollars. And that doesn't help anyone here. So.
Well, those are going to escalate the prices, Councilmember Pappman.
Yeah, escalate it more so. Yeah, I agree. I agree. So I think this is important for our city. Because again, not every city is the same here. We will continue to build housing. We encourage all the housing advocates that are here tonight, help us. In the approved projects we have hundreds of units. But I think the, what was presented here is important. And I would support this measure. I am concerned as to what Mr. Chan said here that we carefully pursue this. But I think we need to pursue this. In order to make sure this SB nine is implemented, but in a fashion that does not negatively. Impact. but in a fashion that does not negatively impact the property owners here, and we can continue to try to provide affordable units. So is that helpful, I hope, for staff?
Thank you, Councilwoman. From my, it sounds like there are at least three. Councilman Feng, where are you? And then we can move this on, move this forward.
First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Holibur for bringing this forward. It's, it's an extremely important discussion. I mean, SB nine is, is a very troubling legislation. You know, it, it, it works in some jurisdiction, but it doesn't work in all of them. And so, I like to say one thing is that, you know, it is important for us to continue as we have been, as some of the other council members have said previously, to encourage more affordable units coming into our city. I think that's, you know, the form of our conclusion that we need to continue to do that. And I think we've been doing a good job at it. But if we're serious about making housing more affordable here in Millbrae, we need to make sure that these affordable units are going to those who needed it the most. So I think, you know, we need to, at some point sooner rather than later, knowing that we have a lot of these units are coming into our city. You know, TOD projects, both TOD projects have a sizable amount of affordable units are coming in as well as, you know, some of the other new ones that are, you know, that are being proposed, that's already on the horizon. As Councilmember Pappan already noted, we need to come up with some kind of ordinance and policies to prioritize and distribute these affordable units, you know, in a way that is equitable and fair. Now, see, here's the thing, if we enact some sort of an ordinance that mandates affordability in this single-family home district, how do we enforce these affordable unit goes to the people who deserve it? I think that's my next question. Legal?
You're barking up private property rights, Mr. Councilmember.
Well, well, I mean, we're talking about, I mean, how do we, how do we know that, let's say, I mean, we're talking about an, an, an ordinance that would ensure that new units coming up to be affordable units, but how do we enforce and know that they in fact goes to those who needed it? I, I guess enforcement is.
I think Darcy can help you on that. It is very well regulated, that it is enforced. So.
Darcy Smith, Community Development Director. So the, the city has the ability to be very aggressive with enforcement of it. But you asked, I think, a two-part question. Number one is, how do we make sure these units go to the right people? Well, the city, through our recently enacted Affordable Housing Program Resolution, you might remember that. I told you that was like the nuts and bolts in the heart of the Affordable Housing Provisions, fifteen pages of a resolution. That really has the process laid out for how these units, that these inclusionary units are regulated by the city. For larger projects, as you know, there's an affordability agreement that's recorded. For smaller projects, if it's just one unit on a single-family property, it's a, it's a deed restriction that runs with the land as I proffered for fifty-five years, which is the standard term. And then the city has the ability to do audits, to require annual reports. If it's a rental unit, for example, and to audit and confirm the income. If it's an ownership unit, you know, those, that, that selection is done. We've done it traditionally for our ownership units through a lottery process that the city runs and is involved with. For apartment complexes, there's a process to select qualified tenants. And many cities do a lottery process or other mechanism that's very transparent and open to select them. And then the ongoing enforcement to confirm that a qualified tenant is in there. That's usually done every year. The incomes are checked and verified. And then also some, some cities just do spot checking to show up and, you know, confirm occupancy and make sure, you know, the occupant resides on the premises as they promised. And we have the ability to be pretty, you know, pretty aggressive with enforcement. So cities, keep an eye on these things and, and, you know, catch offenders and do just like we do with code enforcement. Take them through the process to enforce our, our provisions. Does that mean we catch everyone? No, like, you know, with code enforcement, you know, it's a process and it takes a lot of time. But we, we are very aggressive in this area, because it's not something that's fair to cheat on, right? It's just not fair. You're taking what should be a really important public good and you're, you know, you're manipulating or otherwise compromising the system.
Right. So with this emergency ordinance as proposed here, I just want to be clear, Councilmember Holibur, you're saying that for the second unit being created as part of the SB nine, it need to be deed restricted and affordable? Is that what your proposal is?
That's a conceptual idea. I mean, I, I will say there's a very compelling interest here to maybe reexamine the fees. You know, we just, those were just before you and adopted in July. But they only, as one of the members of the audience, require what we call the in lieu or fractional fee for projects that are between four and nine units. And it was at five, and I think it was Councilmember Holibur said, oh, let's drop it down to four. We made that change. But it's at four. There are cities that do drop it down to one and even do it for single-family additions. So I think with San Carlos, if you want to look at, look at their fee schedule, they require it as low as single-family additions per square footage basis. But we, as, these were brand-new fees, right? So we looked at sort of setting it in the middle of what other peer cities do. So we set it at, they're required for five to nine units. So we can certainly look at that. We would need to do a fiscal analysis that'll come up with those. I, I'm, I'm good at math, but I don't, don't crank out those numbers when they come to in lieu fees. We'd have to hire a financial firm to analyze those and, and prepare them. But you might remember, they were pretty high for the fractional fees. They were around two hundred thousand dollars. So we'd be looking at something around that range, maybe a little bit lower. I, I don't know.
Councilmember Holibur. Can I just chime in? The language that's here before you was not provided by news from staff. There was a proposal that I saw from another organization. And I think what was written that was for every SB nine project would be required to have at least one unit that's deed restricted, affordable. So if they go from one to two, then that second unit would be deed restricted. If they go one to three, it would still be one. If they go one to four, it would still be one. So I, I mean, I'm fairly flexible with this. I think it's important to have that covenant at this time. I think maybe as we go forward, the permanent ordinance, we can look at fees as opposed to the restriction.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Feng, all right, do.
I just want to make one more point. Sorry. I'm just trying to think, you know, I, I understand the intention of your proposal, Councilmember Holibur. But I just want to make sure that we got all the bases covered and, and, you know, all the nuances studied, because I don't want to create unintended consequences with this. And we need to be extremely careful here, because I'm just thinking, for example, there's a scenario where someone want to move, say, move their parents in by creating an additional unit under SB nine with this ordinance of mandating certain amount of affordability requirement, precluding that, you know, extended family members, so on and so forth, that sort of scenario, rather than, I mean, you know, it's important that we create affordable housing. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm well beyond convinced to do so. But I just want to make sure that this is not going to create some unintended consequences.
In that situation, Councilman Ant Feng, isn't that an ADU, though? Couldn't you just do that under existing ADU?
So I guess there are many ways to skin a cat, if you will, but, you know, it, for example, siblings, for example, if, if my brother-in-law wants to move into a two-unit building, they may not necessarily qualify for those income justification. I'm just trying to think out loud here. I mean, I'm going to say is we need a little bit more study on this. And, you know, I, I don't want to rush into this, because I, because I can just imagine a lot of nuances.
I think, Councilmember, that would probably be, probably be under the ADU ordinance, either be an ADU or a JADU. I think with SB nine, the concern is more, you know, lot splits and, you know, putting four units on, on one parcel. So I don't think that would be a concern. I think, you know, we can monitor the situation until the permanent ordinance is, is in place. But I think this, as written or, you know, with amendments to this would prevent, help prevent speculators and flippers and people from just coming in and driving up the price of of real estate in Millbrae to make a buck, and really prioritize affordability.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Pappan. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Feng.
I just want one more question for the council. On the SB nine, can we, can we not limit the second unit created as part of this in terms of its size?
So we can limit size as long as we don't prevent the construction of units that are eight hundred square foot each. And that's something we'll definitely look at in the regular ordinance, but we just didn't have enough time to dig into that. Because there's a lot of options. I mean, even tonight, you know, we have, we have several items we really need feedback on, unless you just want to stick with the urgency ordinance to like one item. But it would be nice to know what, if you want to bring us to bring back an urgency ordinance, which of the, you know, eight items that we proffered in the staff report you want in the urgency ordinance? Because that's a one, you know, one-time thing, up for, well, up fraction. In the regular ordinance, believe me, we're going to have probably a three-hour study session on this item. So we're geared up for that. And we also will have, as I mentioned, a community workshop. And that's where these myriad of options can be walked through for your more detailed feedback.
So when you say eight hundred, you mean you cannot create, you cannot mandate something created less than eight hundred?
Correct, yeah. The, the state law's a little interesting in that it says like, cities can do this, but you, your laws can't you know, can't limit this. And so one of those is our laws can't limit the size below eight hundred square feet. And there's a lot of that. I mentioned the setbacks, right? You can have setbacks, but no more than four feet. So again, there's a lot of these development standards that we've got to analyze state law and then interpret, interpretations of state law before we come back to you.
Councilman Feng, all set?
Not quite, but I, I'll yield the time.
Well, I think what I just heard Director Smith say is she has a slide, I think it's two pages, with those eight items. If you can pull them up while you're doing that, Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And for the record, doesn't an emergency ordinance only last like six months?
Forty-five days and less extended.
Yeah, forty-five days, and then has to be extended with more justification. You have to keep looking at it. And it can't last more than a year.
Okay.
Certainly, as you've heard from Darcy, we're, we'll be bringing you a permanent ordinance before that. Yeah, and I need to emphasize the significance of this emergency ordinance in that Millbrae is an intermodal center here. And the pressure from the housing advocates, when the BART development went in, actually destroyed the access to that station. So that now the quality of life for people taking buses into that station, if you're in a large bus, you have to walk six minutes each way. That's fifteen minutes a day. That's an hour of the quality of life for people. So when you talk about dividing up units and no parking and no that, I mean, I get that, you know, a lot of people not using cars and stuff like that, but that can impact the station area so negatively that nobody can even get there. So there, there are planning considerations not to, you know, prohibit housing or additional housing or affordable housing. There are just planning considerations that need to be evaluated very, very carefully for a small city like ours. Because even the smallest impact can throw the balance of the flow of traffic or the access to transportation, all kinds of things here. I do think that this emergency ordinance is important, because should someone come in and start just splitting up properties in such a way that a whole neighborhood is thrown off, it's really going to disrupt people's access or flow throughout the city here. So the fact that the SEQA is not, these projects are not subject to SEQA and the impact that they may have at this point, I do think an emergency ordinance for the forty-five days is important. And really further evaluation as we, we move forward here. Because it's just, we have to look at what the impacts are going to be. And that's what concerns me the most moving forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman. From, it sounds to me like, and I agree with everything everyone has said. So there's at least four of us to go forward. Staff, what do you need from us? We can make this an action. But I'm not exactly sure how to phrase the motion on that. But Darcy, tell us what you need.
Well, Mayor, Mayor, if I could step in here, I mean, I'm unclear that there's four. You know, for this, what I heard is there, there is for, for this, but, but the timing, right? So we'd, we'd like some clarity, you know, on the timing.
And there may be five. I just didn't hear, I didn't hear Councilman Feng give strong direction one way or the other.
I think there are also, I also think there's some legal questions. You know, some members of the public brought that up this evening. We know, we, we've been following some of the other urgency ordinances, at least one. Although there's been no litigation filed, there are some, you know, rumbling that, that it will be filed. So if, if the direction from the council is, hey, bring it back, you know, at a special meeting or the meeting next Tuesday, we very much have to limit this to, you know, the affordability covenant at this point in time. And I think clarification on the lot splits, that's what I would recommend. If we want to do a, a, you know, more than that, then I would suggest give us a little bit more time and direct us to bring the urgency ordinance back for adoption on January eleventh. I, I think that those, that time between, you know, January second and the city council meeting on January eleventh isn't going to, you know, put us in arms' way, so to speak. So just, just, it depends on how much the council is seeking in this urgency ordinance. And so that's really what we would need clarification on. And so, Darcy, I think you had some more information, or at least I covered it.
Yeah. So can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yeah. So this, these are like the top two policy considerations, as the City Manager mentioned, that you could consider in the urgency ordinance. It would sort of be the things that when we talk to our attorneys about, the things to, you know, be cognizant of, under local control, that we may want to consider. The other items that I presented, as the manager said, some of these we can do just through administrative processes. The affidavits, the deed restrictions. Again, I said those are checks, checks and balances for state law. So we'll research it more, but we believe that administratively, through our application process, we can require these, and we'll probably be further along in the process. For example, the deed restriction is done after approval, so that's a later thing. And the restricted covenants, again, those implement state law. So if we want to stick to these two topics, I think it would just be nice to get consent, to get feedback from the council to confirm this is what you would want in the urgency ordinance to bring back to you.
So I'm going to do a quick roll call. Councilman Holibur, where are you?
I'd be supportive of that.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Feng?
I, I'm not sure at this point.
That's fine. Councilwoman Pappan.
I would be supportive of this.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Does this, does this not allow us to, to add anything at a, at another meeting? Or is this like, if we stick with these, it's only these?
My understanding is that these three bullet points would be drafted into the emergency ordinance. The other issues would come back in the normal process with the contract that we've already approved.
Well, the emergency ordinance is going to come back either way.
But. Right, but the only, only the bullet points currently being shown right now would be in the emergency ordinance. All of the other things are still up for discussion, but we'll come back through the process that we approved that sixty thousand dollar consultant contract.
Or, or they can be done administratively by city staff.
Thank you. Or, or done administratively.
After a meeting? After another meeting, we could have another meeting and then add administrative changes?
I don't want to speak for Ms. Smith, but I believe what she said is if the urgency ordinance is approved, staff would be able to do the rest, the other items offline without necessarily needing the council's approval.
Correct. Most of them administratively, the, the, I think the big thing here. Correct. Most of them administratively, the the, I think the big thing here. For the council to be aware, and Darcy, correct me if I'm wrong, are the objective design standards. That would need to be, have to be adopted by the city council and ordinance.
Yeah, and those are just going to take a lot more work.
Yeah.
They're, you know, robust development standards, so we're not ready for those yet.
But these, these, these kind of land use. Obviously, the affordability covenant.
But if we come back to, I'm sorry, I I'm having a hard time with this vote. If we come back, if we come back. To a meeting in January, would that be ample enough time to present the other bullet points that we could address? Marcy, Darcy?
Well, we need direction now. I mean, the thing is, so the, there's not much here, right? There's this prohibition on further subdivision. I think that's in SB nine. So again, it's just, it's just reiterating it, but the setbacks are one thing. That you might want to consider, whether you want to have the four-foot required rear and side yard setbacks.
Yeah, I want to consider more than this.
Vice Mayor, do you mean in the emergency ordinance? Coming back in January?
This is for forty-five days. I'll consider this. I I would go with this. I would give this direction.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I I will do the same. So you've got four, you've got four. Did we want to make a vote tonight so that we don't have to bring this back next week?
No, I want to bring it back, please.
So we would be having this at the front end of the reorganization, which is virtual.
Yeah, you 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 need to have an ordinance brought back to you. An urgency ordinance, as was commented upon, does need to show. Justification for the urgency.
Okay, so we have to come.
Can't just direct, oh, you know, put these in an ordinance.
Okay.
It needs to be a policy-considered action, and you need to see the document.
Okay. Vice Mayor? Yes, you'll be mayor in less than a week. I will be in the middle of the ocean from the seventeenth to the twenty-seventh. So just in terms of having an additional meeting, I'll be back the morning of the twenty-seventh, but I will be at sea, literally.
Well, what I'd like to do, if it's, if it's. My recommendation would be that 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 we work hard, we, you know, we need to. Notify this twenty-four hours in advance, but bring it back next Tuesday. So then that way, with holidays and everything else, we don't get into trying to get a quorum together.
Is Darcy?
Be my recommendation.
Can she hand, I mean, that's a lot to ask.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't.
It's why if we limit it, you know, to to those three items, I mean, we have it already written. Now we just, and and there is a a finding that I think we can make. Relative to the urgency of this, that our assistant city attorney, Mike Conner, has researched, so. Yeah, if we limit it to that, I think we can do it. But, you know, any more than that, as as Darcy was mentioning. You know, that list of eleven or twelve things, and I think it will require further legal research. Then we would have to bring that back, I think, on on the eleven. But if we stick to those three items or four items with, you know, including the setback.
Is it at all possible to consider a special meeting for the end of next week? I mean, Tuesday is coming pretty quickly. You would, I would think that you would want this thing. Published and available to the public by by Friday, when you generally issue. Documents for your regular meetings on Tuesday. I'm just wondering, you know.
If it helps, I can do Thursday the sixteenth, but as of eleven AM the next day, no.
I can do Thursday.
I could do Wednesday or Thursday.
I like that idea. Thank you, John.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, I I, this is not kind of off the shelf.
We're just rushing, we're rushing everything.
Yeah.
We will thank the governor for that one.
We need. Yeah, we need to justify each of the bullets, not just one. And so I I think we need to give some thought to this.
Gina, are you available Thursday? Yes, she is. So we we could, we could do that, guys. I'm sorry.
I I think Wednesday would be better for me, if it's in the evening.
We could do anytime, actually, as long as we notice it.
Yeah, in terms of schedule, my Wednesday evening is better than Thursday.
I don't have my calendar pulled up.
Do it during the day as well.
Yeah, we could do it during the day, you guys.
That's true.
During the day.
Eduardo, perhaps you can pull together, check with with Ms. Smith and pull together a doodle poll and and we can go that way. Rather than taking our time now.
Darcy needs time, so Wednesday might be pushing her. Thursday or Friday might be better for her.
Yeah, and and not to speak for Darcy, but she's going to be on vacation, so I I will, you know, be guiding the council, you know, through this. So that's why I just. Really, direction on efficiency and effectiveness, and what is it that we're trying to protect here? And then as we then, you know, move forward with our. Our regular ordinance, you know, in late spring, early summer, then we'll have it. But I I think we can stick to the four items. We already have it written. We just, you know, need to make the findings, put it in the format.
And the fourth item is the setbacks?
Yes.
Okay.
If that was, I I, that's the direction, I think.
Councilman Oliver, thank you for bringing it forward. It it just feels a little bit pushed, but I'm I'm willing to work hard through the week to. To iron it out.
Didn't have a lot of time for this, but.
I understand.
Okay. So we don't need a vote tonight. We do need the formal.
Clear direction.
Yeah.
Right.
And and staff, you're set? You've got the direction?
I think we have.
I I think so. I mean, my my preference is always a a motion and a second and a vote, but if if everyone else feels comfortable, I I'm good with it.
I'm happy to do motion, second vote, if that's going to give you, and 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 do that. Mr. Oliver, would you make a motion?
Sure. Motion to direct staff to prepare an urgency ordinance on SB nine. Have to say what?
No, I would just say the four bullet points that we've identified.
Correct, yeah. The four bullet points identified by council staff.
Excellent, thank you. Is there a second?
Oliva.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. No further discussion. Call the vote.
Councilmember Oliver?
Hi.
Councilmember Feng?
I would abstain from this one.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Yes.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
The city council approves to direct staff to prepare an urgency ordinance related to SB nine by vote. Four, zero to one with Councilmember Feng abstaining.
Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk. So the following up action is the City Clerk will send out a doodle poll for us. With a schedule that works with the city manager. Darcy, have a lovely vacation.
Mayor, if I may, I I think Thursday is what we, was was it Thursday?
But a particular time on Thursday. I don't have my calendar up in front of me, and something is telling me I have something on Thursday.
Sometimes it takes me more time to get everybody's calendar together than it does to write the ordinance. So I just, so Thursday, if we can actually.
Okay.
If the council agrees that that's the date, then then we can, we can find a time.
Okay, that would certainly give staff a little more time to draft this, and I think we should have it out to the. Public for transparency, so people can read it.
Yeah.
You know, or it's, it's before the council.
Very good. And then in closing, thanks, everyone. Thank you for all of the people that are still here. Our last council meeting of, well, no, it won't be, our reorganization is next Tuesday. I believe at seven o'clock. We now do not have a special council meeting prior to that. I hope you will all join us for the reorganization. A new mayor will step up, and Annie will take charge on Thursday. So with that, everybody have a great weekend. Go get your booster shots if you can, and see you next week. And closing at ten twelve. Thank you all for a very long night.
Thank you, everyone.